UBSutter.live's local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske truck rentals. Details at plumislakeselfstorage.com.
If you wish to speak under public comment, please note that on the speaker card when the matter is announced, please approach the speaker's lectern after being recognized by the chair. Can I get a roll call, please?
Supervisor McKelley?
Here.
Supervisor Flores?
Here.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
Here.
Supervisor Baines?
Present.
Supervisor Conant?
Here.
Can I ask Bob Fishgotti, Fish, to lead us in the prayer, please?
Father, I just thank you. Actually, I thank you for the rain. I thank you for the things that where you go before us and make the way straight. I thank you for the changes, the things that are going on all around us. And then today, I just ask one more time that you would bless wisdom, that you would bless with your wisdom, understanding, and that God, for all things that we reach out to you and say, we need help, that you would very clearly answer us and give us the help that we need. Amen.
Amen. And Bob, thank you for your service as well. And can we get our very own Scott Hanson to lead us in the pledge?
Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no beginning and end.
We thank you for your service as well, Scott. Thank you very much, partner. Public comment. Members of the public will be allowed to address the board on items of interest to the public that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board supervisors. State law provides that no discussion or action may be taken on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. All right, with that being said, I have Liz Cervantes. This is, this is just public comment. This isn't, you still have two, three, and six that...
Honorable Chair Supervisors, my name is Liz Cervantes and I live in District 5, Sutter County. Today is Election Day. Thank God. After a very stressful 90 days, I want to thank each and every one of you, you five, for had it not been for your sloppy, ill-willed disaster of a tax measure, I would have never known of the utter chaos, corruption, unorganization, laziness, and lack of leadership. Measure A is on its way to defeat. Can't be totally sure of that until Donna says so. But I'd like to say that I don't want to be like Uba County. I don't want to be like Kalusa County. I don't want to be like Butte County. I like Sutter County. I want us to be the most excellent county that we can be, and we can do it. We're not that far apart. Measure A is over, but we are just beginning. I can promise you this. We are watching. We are listening. We are the voters, and we'll be waiting for the next initial to appear on our ballots. I would ask you for the love of God, do it right the next time.
Well, thank you, Liz. I'm going to ask if you don't mind speaking about, so you have two, three, and six. I'll give you your equal time for each, so you don't have to feel like you're getting rushed through the three.
Number two is regarding the time change.
Is number two pulled for...
I'd like that pulled from the consent and put up for discussion if possible.
Yeah, I'll pull it for you.
Thank you, Mike.
And number three is the fire truck.
Okay, the fire trucks. I just want to make sure that Givicki is getting in on any actions since they're the locals. I don't know if they have the access that they do in Nevada. I saw where we are purchasing a truck from Givicki, which is great. I just didn't know if, you know, shop local, buy local, right?
Sorry, I didn't have my red button on. Everything goes through a bidding process. So it is put out to bid from all the local dealerships as well as surrounding. So we are trying to, and, you know, we can't go out and say, hey, Givicki so-and-so Hobblett quoted us this. That's against the law. You can't do that. So we just hope that for the best that they come out with a better quote because we'd like to buy local as much as possible. Absolutely.
Okay, so that's a good segue into item number six?
Number six? Yep.
Okay, so what that is, is the liquid IV, the rehydration for the firefighters. Totally for it. I just want to point out to you, though, at my fire station, Oswald Tudor, they can't drink their water. So I just want to make sure when that pallet of goodies comes in that you provide for those boys.
Absolutely. We'll make sure that they are, continue to make sure they are taken care of. All right, with that being said, we are going to... We're going to go to appearance now and then bring it back? Yep, we're going to go to appearance. Sorry, then we're going to bring it back to that item number two. All right, Steve, you're up.
Approval to determine distribution of the county of Sutter's votes for reclamation District 1,000 candidates and adoption of a resolution authorizing the county administrator or their designee to cast those votes on behalf of the county, reflecting the distribution as determined by the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you, Honorable Chair and Supervisors. This item was sent to the county after the last meeting, so this was the last opportunity and first opportunity to bring forward. The county has three votes for the trustee positions for RD 1,000 candidates. RD 1,000, the main part in Sutter County is just south of the bypass, you know, north of Sankey Road, the bypass that runs kind of northeast, southwest. The candidates are all listed on here and in your agenda packets. I looked to see if there were any Sutter County residents. There were not. They're all Sacramento County residents. So I don't have a strong recommendation for you on any of those related to Sutter County interests. I would note that Mr. Jag Baines, Ms. Elena Reader are both incumbents, and then Mr. Ed Perez is a Water Agency Manager, seems to have the most relevant experience with, or that would be applicable to RD 1,000. You get three votes. You could give one to each of those. You could give all three to one of those people. You could give all three to any of the candidates that are on the staff report of the seven. So I guess I'll turn it back over to you to see if you have any preference there, and then we will fill out the ballot and have it postmarked before five.
All right, with that, we're going to bring it back to the board. Look for any speaker cards. No speaker cards. Open it up for public comment. Is there any public comment? Going to close the public comment, and we're going to bring it back to the board for discussion or a motion.
Do the chair.
Yes.
May I have approval of recommended action, please?
Okay, no, are we going to recommend for Perez?
On Perez. Yeah, sorry.
All right.
I mean, I don't have it in the game, but I haven't heard of this guy. Yeah.
Okay. All right, I got a motion by Supervisor Flores, second by Supervisor Conant for Perez. Can I get a roll call, please? And that is all three votes going to Perez.
Supervisor McKelley?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
Yes.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Conant?
Aye.
Motion passes. We're going to bring it back to the consent calendar. All right, and we have, I'm going to read this over again. The consent calendar groups together those items which are considered non-controversial or for which prior policy direction has been given to staff and that require only routine action by the board. The chair will advise the audience that matters may be adopted in total by one motion. However, the board may at its option or upon request of a member of the public consider any matter separately. And we have pulled item number two. And Liz Cervantes, would you like to take the podium? And...
Let's do the vote on the three.
Oh, you know what?
Three through fourteen.
Liz, let's put a pause on that. Let's vote for three for fourteen right now.
Move to approve three through fourteen.
We got a motion by Conant.
Second.
Conant, second by Supervisor McKelley. Can I get a roll call, please?
Supervisor McKelley?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
Aye.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Conant?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, now we have item number two on the consent, and we have Liz Cervantes, our only speaker. Go ahead.
Liz Cervantes, District 5, Sutter County. It's no surprise that I'm up here harping again at the time of the meeting. But I did get a text message from someone today, and I thought that you would like to know what it said. What time is supervisors meeting? Them. Me. 3:00 PM. What the... I said, yeah, that's the time. It's always been that way, right in the middle of the day. She said, they don't represent us. I'm telling you, as I'm looking around this room, I would venture to say that a good three-quarters of you are staff. You are elected to represent your constituents. Your constituents in this climate cannot be here because they are too busy working at 3:00 in the afternoon. Now, you keep on saying you want to be like Uba County. We'll be like Uba County then and move your meeting to 9:00 AM. That would be better. I would prefer, my first choice would be 7:00 AM. That way, we'd really see who cares.
All right, we're going to look for any more speaker cards. No more speaker cards. We're going to close the public comment, bring it back to the board for discussion. I'm, I mean...
Do the chair. I don't, I don't have a feeling either way. I mean, day, night, Saturday, Sunday, Christmas Eve, whatever you want to do. But my thing is, we've tried it in the past. Steve, you have to, you know, refresh my memory, but I think six years ago, maybe when Supervisor Whitaker was on, we used to have meetings in the afternoons and then in the evenings, depending on the type of year, right? Time of year?
Yeah, in 2009, when I first started, we had 7:00 PM meetings. A few years later, went to 6:00 PM. In the summers, we would go to 3:00 or 3:30, and I think that was to accommodate Supervisor Whitaker at the time. And, yeah.
I just remember, I do recall that we, whichever time it was, it was the same amount of people that showed up. Now, this may be a different era, you know, I don't know, it's five years later, but this has already been tried. So like I said, either way, for me, it's fine, whatever you guys want to do.
Well, I'm a big fan of 7:00 in the morning. I like 7:00 or 9:00 in the morning because just like all of you, we do have jobs. I can't afford to do this job if I don't have my other job. All right, if I don't have my other job, see you later. I can't be a supervisor anymore. So it would work better with me early in the morning. I mean, heck, I could go for 5:00 or 6:00 in the morning. But I'm being serious because we're all early risers here.
I'll second the motion.
So, I mean, it's, I'm being serious. If I would, I would go at 7:00. I mean, I would even, oh, yeah, but I'm not going to make someone get up at 4:00 in the morning, 4:30 in the morning. Let's open it up a little more discussion here. I want to hear your input.
Do the chair.
Yes, sir.
So I guess my biggest concern would be staff. I mean, a lot of these things, you know, that are obviously we're supposed to do are due diligence beforehand and look into every item before we come to these meetings and not put staff on the spot while we're here. But they're here for, you know, folks in the audience that have questions and that type of thing that, you know, does, does a 9:00 AM, is that, is that okay for staff? I don't care either, you know, which time that we're here. It doesn't matter to me. We know what we signed up for.
Yeah, I mean, I would...
Do the chair. Just sorry to add, but in seriousness, like if we're going to change it from 3:00 to 9:00, I don't see a difference, you know? If we're going to change it to 7:00 PM, I could see a difference. But if we were changing it from 3:00 to 9:00, then I guess I, you know, in all seriousness, I'd just be opposed to changing it from the one time to the other that's exactly the same. You know, it doesn't make any sense.
Do the chair. Yeah, my only concern about it is when we get into closed session items. Sometimes we're able to have our closed session before our 3:00 scheduled meeting, but oftentimes, we have to do it at the end of our regular meeting because lawyers or somebody's coming from Sack and traveling. They can't get here till at the end of our meeting. That would be my only concern.
Well, I mean...
Do we want to, do we want to think about this for a little bit? And maybe we should have a, I hate to suggest it, but a study session to talk about...
I don't want to have a study session.
No, it is pretty important because, I mean, you know, you don't want to, you don't want to move it to a different time and find out that it messes up other things.
Well, why don't we do this? Why don't we ask staff to put on the agenda for the next meeting in a few weeks? And let's all, Steve, if we could have maybe some 2-2-1 meetings, you know what I mean? And with yourself and, and see, because I am a big fan personally of an earlier meeting. Like I said, I'm only one here, and I want it, whatever works with my colleagues here and so forth. And let's do that.
I'll make a motion to continue it till, when is the next meeting?
November 29th.
Okay, I'll make a motion to continue the item till the 29th.
Second. All right, we have a motion by Supervisor McKelley, second by Supervisor Baines. Can I get a roll call, please?
Supervisor McKelley?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
Aye.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Conant?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. All right, this is the best part right here, presentation time. All right, here we go. A resolution of the Sutter County Board of Supervisors supporting Operation Green Light for veterans, recognizing the contribution of veterans of the armed forces in the Sutter County communities. Whereas the residents of Sutter County have the greatest respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all the men and women who selfishly served our country and this community in the armed forces. And whereas the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens, and Sutter County seeks to honor these individuals who have paid the higher price for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And whereas veterans continue to serve our community in the American Legion, veterans of foreign wars, religious groups, civil service, and by functioning as county veteran service officers in 29 states to help fellow former service members access more than $52 billion in federal health and disability and compensation benefits each year. And whereas approximately 200,000 service members transition to the civilian communities annually, an estimated 20% increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the near future. And whereas studies indicate that 44% to 72% of service members experience high levels of stress during transition from military to civilian life and active military service, members transitioning from military service are at a high risk for suicide during their first year after military service. And whereas the National Association of Counties encourages all counties, parishes, and boroughs to recognize Operation Green Light for veterans. And whereas Sutter County appreciates the sacrifices of our United States military personnel and believes that specific recognition should be granted, including recognition of Sutter County employees who have served in the military. Now therefore, be it resolved with designation as Green Light for Veterans County, Sutter County hereby declares a week of November 7th through November 13th, a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifice of our men and women in uniform transitioning from active service. And be it further resolved, in observance of Operation Green Light, Sutter County encourages its citizens and patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all those who have made immensural sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying a green light in a window of their place of business or residence. And I'd like to read off the names of our current servicemen and women who served. John Beaver, Monica Dewey, Raymond Hogan, Justin Jones, John Zemko, Kirsten Burks, John Flo, Chavante Gold McCants, Megan Rinni, Anthony Kopac, Emiliano Asalis, Stephen Shory, Charles Swartson, Kevin Arick, Charlay Baumgartner, Robert Greer, Aslan Minar, Curtis Taylor, Greg Zimbike, Johnny Bang, Dejean Crowder, Scott Hanson, Dennis Howard, Kostin Boakamp, Mark Hyland, Tyler Kusch, Tyler Wells, Cameron King, James Guthie, Angela Castellino, Susan Redford, Austin Howard, Jeffrey Kohler, John Perry, Steve Carney, and Michael Johnson. Can we give them all a round of applause, please? Thank you very much. So who, can we get a picture? Do you don't mind coming down here? Or we can come to you? Maybe, we'd love to get a big group picture. That'd be pretty neat. Oh, yeah, we could stand out. You guys line up front and we'll stand in the back. Because it's all about... And thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. And I also want to thank the others that are sitting here that also served. I know we have a couple. I know that, Liz, your children and so forth, and we got some grandchildren and others that are sitting here. That's pretty awesome. My dad served in World War II in the submarines. I know, I believe your father served?
And his mother.
And his mother, yeah. So thank you very much for your service. We appreciate that. Next is Lisa Herbert. I love this, by the way. This is amazing.
Good afternoon, Honorable Chairman, members of the board. I'm Nick Oliver, Assistant Ag Commissioner. Our Ag Commissioner, Lisa Herbert, has asked me to present today according to one of the county-wide top priorities, development of leadership through training opportunities. The 2021 Sutter County Crop and Livestock Report's been officially submitted to the Secretary of California Department of Food and Ag and the Board of Supervisors. We appreciate the opportunity to present a brief overview of the what, why, and how of our annual report, as well as touch on some statistics. Why do we produce the crop report? Providing a statistical description of the county agricultural production in an annual crop report is one of the functions of the county agricultural commissioners. It is mandated by law, it's in California Food and Agricultural Code, that the commissioner shall compile reports on the condition, acreage, production, and value of the agricultural products in their county. It's especially important due to the great variety in types of production across the state. California produces over 400 different commodities. So the value of the crop report, this report is used by banks, credit agencies, agricultural businesses, planning, ranchers and growers, schools and libraries, and the media. The reports are requested regularly, and I'll note that the reports dating back to 1940 are available on our department's website. The how, how do we collect the data? We do this through surveys primarily mailed out at the beginning of the year. We follow up with personal contacts and phone calls. One of our priorities in collecting and working with the data is to preserve the confidentiality. So it's very important not to disclose any one producer's amount of production. So we do that. We have some strict confidentiality rules that, that we must have so many results to be able to publish any production that's broken out. We do destroy all of the individual reports after receiving them as well. So our timeline, we work on this most of the year. We take up to 400 hours to produce this, and it involves all of our staff. I'll note that the cover picture of this year's report was taken by our Ag Commissioner, Lisa Herbert, during one of her field trips out and about. Also contributing to the photos in the report was local photographer A.J. Anderson. He's worked with us for several years now. So this year's theme is agricultural production in each of the five supervisory districts, kind of a new skin on ag production for us. And we were very happy with the outcome. We had very, very good participation from the supervisors. And we're hoping next year's theme will be tomatoes, though that, that may change between now and then. So can we, oh, I'm, I'm in charge of this, right? Okay, so this may be kind of tough to pick out the numbers. On the left side, we have the gross production values dating back to 1959. So the main point here is the current ag production or the ag production from 2021, $621 million and 300, $621 million, 366,000. This is an increase of $52 million, 509,000 above 2020. And so here in this graph to the right, you can see the production over an 11-year span. And you can see towards the bottom, the yellow and red lines. The yellow line is the walnut value, and the red line is the rice value. So once in the past 30 or so years has the walnut value been the top number there, that was in 2014 due to very high walnut prices. And you can see the corresponding spike in the total value, the bar. And then there was another spike in 2019, and that was due to high rice prices. So the top five crops from this year were unchanged from the previous year. Rice, walnuts, peaches, processing tomatoes, and nursery products, in that order. So rice remained in its top spot due to a very significant decrease in acreage. That was offset by increases in yield and price. So the value fell to 174 million, and that includes rice seed as well. Walnuts are in second place. The value, the total value of walnuts increased almost 61% to 121 million, increases in acreage and price. twenty-one million, increases in acreage and price. Peaches remained in third, increases in yield, acreage, and value to fifty-five, almost fifty-six million dollars. Tomatoes, processing tomatoes in fourth, increased in acreage and price, decreased in yield, just behind peaches, at almost fifty-five million dollars. And nursery products in fifth, decreases in acreage and quantity, but there was an increase in value to forty-five, almost forty-six million. So the big picture here, and these are 2020 statistics, statewide statistics trail the individual counties by a year or so. Sutter County was ranked in 2020 the twenty-second county in total value production. We were then ranked number two for prunes, two for rice, three for peaches, four for vegetable and vine crop seeds, four for corn, grain, and five for dried beans. So on to the, this is the ten leading crops. So this year's feature was the supervisory districts, and we have some statistics here for each of the districts, and some input from each of the supervisors about what makes their district special and their connection to agriculture. So just a few things I wanted to point out for each district. District one, the pesticide permit acreage was sixty-two percent of the total district acreage. Now, this is, this is a really rough estimate of the agricultural production in each district. The top crops in District one by acreage, walnut, rice, almond, prune, and peach. And District one was the top peach-producing district in the county. District two, as you would expect, the pesticide permit acreage is smaller, at ten percent of the total district acreage. Top crops by acreage are peach with ninety acres and walnut with thirty-six, and has one certified farmer's market. District three, pesticide permit acreage is fifty-eight percent of the total district The top crops by acreage are rice, walnut, wheat, and District three is the top producer of wheat by acreage in the county, almond, and tomato. And we list one farmer's market, I believe there were actually two farmer's markets last year in District three. And I will note, we have eighty-one years of crop reports posted on our website, and I think this is the first one ever that contains a mention of the high school football powerhouse, Sutter High Huskies. District four, pesticide permit acreage is seventy-two percent of the total district acreage. The top crops by acreage are rice, almond, walnut, peach, and prune. And so, thank you. In this, in this feature, Supervisor Baines claims the title of chicken capital of Sutter County. And I just, I just wanted to point out that the ag department does not maintain any official statistics on this, but I don't think anyone's going to argue with that. District five, pesticide permit acreage is eighty-one percent of the total district acreage. Top crops by acreage, and District five is the top district in the county for each of these: rice, walnut, sunflower, almond, and tomato. So finally, I'd like to thank each of the supervisors for their support, both in general of our department, as well as their input on this annual report. Thanks to the CAO staff for helping coordinate this report, and all of the ag department's staff who have participated in collecting, compiling data, taking pictures, and producing and editing content for the report. So any questions?
Bring it back to the board. The chair.
Yes, sir.
So first of all, I'd like to thank everybody for coming today, and you'll notice there's some fine product out on the foyer, some candied walnuts that are a key product in my district. And many of you may not know this, but Sutter County's District five has two hundred and eighteen thousand acres of agricultural farmland, with prime farmland of a hundred and ten thousand. Key crops are rice, followed by walnuts, sunflowers, almonds, and tomatoes. And that dwarfs all the other districts in the county. Of course, it's God's country.
Through the chair.
Yes, sir.
Just want to say thank you for your presentation, and you and Lisa. I know this takes a lot of time to put together, and you guys did a really good job, so thank you.
Thank you.
Through the chair. Good. Good.
Supervisor Baines. Again, I just want to thank you, Nick and Lisa, for putting together such a great, great crop report. This is very, very nice. Thank you. Thanks to all the staff that also helped out as well. Appreciate it.
I just want to say thank you as well. Great job. I know we have a hundred and twenty-six acres in the heart of Sutter County, but I just want, you know, we're mighty small but powerful at the same time. So, and thank you Supervisor Conant for bringing a sample of your products tonight.
Oh, through the chair. One thing, he's giving away the walnuts because they're not worth anything anyways.
Yeah, I want to echo the same comments my colleagues here. This is outstanding, and I look forward to reading these every year, just the same thing where there's sheriff and his report every year. It's nice to see these because the public gets to actually look and see what's going on in all of the county. And then you're able to see what's going on in the years past. And almost kind of like, you can tell what the weather's done just by looking at these to see if there's rice or no rice amount of crop that's been done, because if there's, the rice number's down, which means we had a low water year either the year before. Thank you very much. Outstanding, first-class, Nick and Lisa. All right. With that, we are going to adjourn as the Board of Supervisors and open it up as the In-Home Supportive Service Public Authority Governing Board. We're going to let the roll call stand, and we're going to...
Approval of the minutes of the In-Home Supportive Services Public Authority, October eleventh, 2022, regular session.
All right. Do we have any, any speakers on that? No speaker cards? All right, there's, we're going to approve the minutes in the In-Home Service, so we're going to, I need a motion to approve those?
Move to approve.
Got a motion by Supervisor Baines and a second by Supervisor Conant. Can I get a roll call, please?
Director McKelley.
Aye.
Director Flores.
Aye.
Director Ziegemeyer.
Aye.
Director Baines.
Aye.
Director Conant.
Aye.
Motion passes. We're going to adjourn now as the In-Home Supportive Service Public Authority Governing Board and reconvene as the Board of Supervisors. We're going to let the roll call continually to stand, and we are, have Neil Hayes, Director Developmental Services, presenting items sixteen and seventeen.
Approval to purchase a Ford F-750 seven-yard dump truck for the road division utilizing government pricing concession in an amount not to exceed one hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Approval to waive the requirement for a request for proposal under the provisions of Sutter County Ordinance sixteen dash zero five zero. An approval of an adjustment to the fiscal year 2022-23 adopted budget in the road budget, increasing appropriations by twenty thousand dollars in capital asset vehicle, offset by cancellation of fund balance.
Good afternoon, Chair and Supervisors. Has the title read, so every year my department gets with the General Services lead division to identify vehicles we need to replace. This year's adopted budget included the replacement of two two-ton trucks. And so as it turned out, General Services is currently out with trying to get pricing on, you know, the whole fleet for the county. And staff actually saw that a brand-new F-750 had arrived at Kiwikey Ford, a seven-yard dump truck. So they went to and met with the sales consultants, gathered pricing information, and that information is in the packet. To give a summary, it includes essentially about a sixteen percent discount off of the MSRP for government pricing concessions. This vehicle is used to replace an existing vehicle in our fleet that, due to California environmental air quality regulations, the car restrictions, we're having to essentially reduce and renew our fleet. So we had a hundred thousand dollars budgeted, so we are seeking an adjustment to our budget for about twenty thousand dollars. That'll include the purchase of the vehicle, the licensing, and then the lights and radio that would go. And that money would come out of the department's road fund, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
So through the chair. So Neil, this, you just bought one because that's all they had, right? But you need a second one, correct?
What we actually have is that through General Services, they were seeking a long-wheelbase F-550, and so that is going through the normal process. This became available, and it would, like I say, service the department primarily for road repairs and then hauling all of our equipment trailers. And the F-550s we've previously bought, those when they have a dump bed, they can handle about four to five yards of asphalt. This will handle seven, so it's a much greater weight, and so it helps us get essentially more done per trip.
Okay. Thank you. All right, looking for a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Conant, second by Supervisor McKelley. Can I get a roll call, please?
Supervisor McKelley.
Aye.
Supervisor Flores.
Aye.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer.
Aye.
Supervisor Baines.
Aye.
Supervisor Conant.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Moving on to item number seventeen.
Approval of a Fourth Amendment to the agreement with the California Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation for the Main Jail Expansion Project, extending the term from December thirty-first, 2022 through December thirty-first, 2023. An authorization for the Director of Development Services to execute the agreement.
Yes, once again, so this matter is for the jail expansion. It was completed in July of 2019. Since that time, the county has submitted all of the paperwork required, including the final audit of the project expenses. And so we are waiting for our five percent retention, which amounts to four hundred eighty-seven thousand fifty dollars. We had previously been told that it would arrive before December thirty-first, 2022. The state has identified that they need to take an action before the State Public Works Board that will take them into the next calendar year. And so they provided this amendment that needed to be updated, just so that we have an active amendment and an active agreement that allows us to be eligible to receive our retention amount. At this point, there's no other information requested from the county and no other actions required, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Bring it back to the board for discussion, or actually, I'll look for speaker cards first. No speaker cards, bring it back for discussion now.
Through the chair.
Yes, sir.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Supervisor Baines, second by Supervisor Flores. Can I get a roll call, please?
Supervisor McKelley.
Aye.
Supervisor Flores.
Aye.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer.
Aye.
Supervisor Baines.
Aye.
Supervisor Conant.
Aye.
Motion passes. Michelle, you're finally up.
Hi, good afternoon, Honorable Chair and Supervisors. I'm Michelle Blake with Sutter County Children and Families Commission, and I'm here today on behalf of a multi-agency collaborative called the Trauma-Informed Network of Care with a mission to create a resilient Sutter. Thank you to Supervisors Flores and McKelley for inviting me here today to inform you about an essential program beginning in Sutter called Handle with Care. Allow me to preface that in 2020, Sutter County Children and Families Commission receives funding from the California Department of Healthcare Services and the California Surgeon General's Office to establish a trauma-informed network of care or group of health, education, human service professionals, community members, and organizations to support adults, children, and families by providing access to evidence-based buffering, resources, and supports to help prevent, treat, and heal the harmful consequences of adverse childhood experiences and their toxic stresses. Research shows us that sixty percent of children have been exposed to violence, crime, and abuse. And one in fifteen children are exposed to intimate partner violence each year, and ninety percent of those children are eyewitnesses to the violence. Children exposed to violence are fearful and feel unsecure and unsafe, and more likely to engage in high-risk-taking behaviors such as smoking, substance abuse, skipping school, and criminal behavior. Moreover, these children are at increased risk for lifelong physical and mental health problems like cancer, autoimmune diseases, obesity, depression, and anxiety, which are often exasperated by increased risky behavior. Repeated and chronic activation of stress factors or stress hormones bypass the thinking part of the brain and activates the survival part of the brain, which interrupts normal development and impairs complex thought and learning. So traumatic events make it hard for our children to focus in school, to make friends, to stay emotionally regulated, because traumatized people may see danger, threats, and triggers everywhere. When children are exposed to trauma, they are two-point-six times more likely to fail a grade, two times more likely to be suspended, five times more likely to have attendance problems, and six times more likely to have behavioral problems. It is important to keep in mind that neuroscience tells us that trauma is only part of the equation. While people can hurt, we can also be healed. The amount and strength of protective factors in a traumatic, in a traumatized person's life helps mitigate the impact of trauma. And healing happens through relationships. It's the balance of exposure of traumatic events and protective factors like kind teachers, law enforcement, coaches, sports, faith groups. Those help predict our outcomes. So our Network of Care team recognized that while we can't often prevent our children and students from experiencing traumatic events, we can help them through it. We can help them heal, we can teach them skills to navigate life and build resilience, because we can be the protective factors that buffer the impact of trauma. So our Network of Care team identified a proven strategy developed by the West Virginia Children's Justice Task Force to help traumatized children heal, build hope, and build resiliency. The multi-agency program is called Handle with Care. The Handle with Care program aims to ensure that children who are exposed to crime, violence, or abuse receive appropriate interventions so they can succeed in school to the best of their ability. Handle with Care programs support children exposed to trauma and violence through improved communication and collaboration between law enforcement, schools and childcare agencies, and mental health providers, and thereby connects families, schools, and communities to mental health services. On this slide, you will see a flow chart of events that will guide Sutter County's efforts to respond with trauma-informed practices in caring for children exposed to violence. When our Sutter County Sheriff's Department answers a call, God bless you, and a child is present, they will submit a Handle with Care notice to the school via secure email. The notification will simply state the child's name and Handle with Care. The notification will serve as a heads-up to the school and will not include details of the event. The school will thereby provide observation and supportive accommodations that are needed. If substantial and persistent changes in behavior or functioning are observed in a child with consent of the parent, the school staff will refer the child for additional supportive services, including but not limited to in Sutter County Student Care Team, the Sutter Yuba Behavioral Health, mobile health access hub, or Victim Services. And all of our partners in the Handle with Care efforts have been, have received sector-specific training in trauma-informed practices. And please allow me a little bit of time to introduce you to the exceptional members of the team that are, many of are in the audience today, and each and every one of these individuals have been instrumental in this collective impact project. And they include Donna Thompson and her team for probation, Virginia Burns and her team from Sutter County Superintendent's Office, Josh Thomas with Sutter Yuba Behavioral Health, Sarah Ludwig with Public Health, our Live Oak Superintendent Matt Galbranson and his Live Oak District Team, Commander Chad Nyswanger and his team at the Sheriff's Department, thank you Sheriff Farms, and Mrs. Castillo from Victim Services. And I'd also be remiss if I didn't thank the contributors that helped began this trauma-informed journey and work in Sutter County, and that includes Paula Kearns with Children Welfare Services, but instrumental as the Sutter County Child Abuse Domestic Violence Council Coordinator, Meredith Evans and her team at Peachtree Healthcare, Dr. Ulgan Gonzalez and her team at Feather River Tribal Health, and of course, our Sutter County Children and Families Commissioners and our team. So we're before you today, we are all before you today, to ask for the approval of a multi-agency memorandum of understanding for the provision of establishing the Handle with Care program in Sutter County to address children's exposure to violence and trauma, and ask for authorization for Sutter County departments to sign the MOU. The departments include Health and Human Services, Victim Services... The departments include Health and Human Services, Victim Services, Probation, and the Sheriff's Department. And the MOU will be between Live Oak Unified School District and Sutter County Superintendent's of Schools. And upon approval and execution of this MOU, the Handle With Care program will be piloted at Luther Elementary School with the intent to include all Sutter County schools in the coming years, ultimately building a resilient Sutter community. Thank you.
Through the Chair.
Hold on, let's look for speaker cards. We have no speaker cards. Open up for public comment. No public comment, bring it back to the board.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Michelle, for your presentation. It was excellent, and thank all of you for being here. Looking forward to this trial program. Obviously, it's going to be starting in my district, elementary school in District One. And so I wonder, a quick question is, how long do you think it might be before we, after you've installed this, and then we get an evaluation of, is it successful? Do you have any idea how long that might take?
Well, I could turn it over to our leads right now, which would be Virginia or Matt, on an estimation. We do know that, I mean, we're going to analyze and look at it quarterly more than likely.
Okay.
And we can get back to you.
Yeah, that's okay. I didn't mean to put anybody on the spot.
That's okay.
I'm just, you know, wondering how, you know, or when, if there is a timeline. I mean, I don't, you know.
Virginia has a database in place that we will collect all of the data, and so we will be able to analyze and report back.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Any others?
Yes, through the Chair. I guess I'd thank you for your presentation. So basically, this is like tip for kids?
Yes, it's just a collaborative project to ensure that communication is being conducted to ensure that children who have been exposed to trauma at an event will be able to have a supportive unit at their school site upon their arrival to school the next day. So very similar, yes.
Do you work with them at all, or?
No, not in this capacity, no. But we could, Supervisor.
Just a suggestion that...
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then if there's other questions, I'd like to move to approve the...
I'll second the motion.
We got a motion by Supervisor Baines, second by Supervisor Flores. Roll call, please.
Supervisor McKelley?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
Aye.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Conant?
Aye.
All right, moving on to item number 19.
Approval of Sutter County Policy Number 901, Advanced Step Hiring. Approval of an Advanced Step Request for a lateral deputy sheriff at Step 6 in the Sheriff's Department. An approval of an Advanced Step Request for a lateral deputy sheriff at Step 8 in the Sheriff's Department.
Good afternoon, Chairman Ziegemeyer, members of the Board of Supervisors. Gina Rowland, Human Resources Director for Sutter County. The item before you is requesting approval of a modified Advanced Step Hiring policy. The existing policy was adopted by the Board in January 2009 during a time when county recruitments routinely attracted 100 or more candidates for entry-level positions. Over the years, as the labor market has become more competitive, nearly all county departments are struggling to recruit and hire qualified individuals for their vacant positions. Requests to hire employees at an advanced step have become the norm rather than the exception, and often the county loses qualified candidates to other employers because we're unable to move quickly enough on departments' requests for approval to hire at a step above Step 1. The new normal requires county policies to be more flexible and to eliminate unnecessary bureaucratic processes. So the policy that we are recommending to be modified would give department heads the authority to hire employees at Step 1, Step 2, or Step 3. Steps 4 and Steps 5 would require approval of the HR Director and the County Administrator, and any request to hire at Step 6, 7, or 8 would need to be approved by the Board of Supervisors with concurrence of the CIO and HR Director. And then the other part of the recommended action is that you approve Advanced Step Placement of two lateral deputies. So with the recent salary increases approved by the Board on September 13th, the department has been able to attract four lateral deputy sheriff candidates. Within the existing authority under the policy, they've hired two of them, but two of them have advanced experience, and the department is requesting Advanced Step Placement upon hire. One of the candidates has six years, I'm sorry, one of the candidates has two years' experience, and the department is requesting authority to hire that candidate at Step 6 of the salary range. And another candidate has nine years' experience with a city police department, and the department is requesting Step 8. There's no fiscal impact associated with approval of the Advanced Step Hiring Policy as department's heads are responsible to operate their department within the appropriation level adopted by the Board of Supervisors. There's also no fiscal impact for approval to hire, or no fiscal impact associated with the Advanced Step requests as the department has sufficient salary savings to cover the costs. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
It looks like Supervisor McKelley, you have something to say.
Yeah, through the Chair. Thank you. So the two new deputy hires were from out of this jurisdiction? Is that the...
They were, well, so there are four laterals. The two that we're requesting approval today are from very nearby agencies.
Right, okay. Well, finally, a little bit of good news, right? That's good. All right, thank you.
Anyone else, or all say something? I think this is something that's needed. We're going to have to do whatever we can to shore up our Sheriff's Department. I mean, when I see our sheriff out there patrolling darn near every other day, I'm wondering, you're out here on patrol? Well, I don't have the bodies to patrol. And it's one of those, it's... I'm excited to actually see people coming over to us saying that, hey, so it looks like this is working, and I know you have a lot of bodies to fill. I know that, but hopefully we're going to get there because, you know, when people call and say, hey, there's a lot of thievery going on here and so forth, well, we're trying to do everything we can as a board and as a sheriff, you know, to fill in these positions. So, but I want to thank you, and that's it for me. So I'll look for a motion.
To the Chair. Move to approve.
Okay, I'm sorry, you...
Second.
Talked out of order.
Talked out of order. Yeah, shame on you. I'm gonna give it to Supervisor Baines. I'm gonna give you the second, though, Supervisor Conant. All right, all right. Roll call, please.
Supervisor McKelley?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
Yes.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Conant?
Aye.
All right, moving on to item number 20, follow-up announcements.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to add, we have a couple other veteran-related programs coming up. So Sutter County's been invited to participate with Nevada, Yuba, and Placer Counties in coordinating a job fair at Beal Air Force Base, which will likely be sometime between January and March. So we will post information on that publicly. And also, our Human Resources Department has applied to the Department of Defense for Sutter County to become an authorized skill bridge organization to allow service members to work in internships during their last 180 days of service to help transition into non-military jobs. Thank you.
Thank you. And we're going to bring it back to the supervisors, and we'll start out with over here on Supervisor Baines, and then you can give your, you know, closing memory of and so forth and everything.
Thank you. I'd like to request a letter of sympathy and condolences, go out to the families of Raleigh Singh, Harold Eastridge, and Serinder Joshi. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Flores?
I have no comments to. Thank you.
Supervisor Conant?
Yeah, first of all, don't forget the 11th is, I believe, is Veterans Day, and we will be going to the Marysville Parade, I believe the entire board is, I think. And also, Reis Across America is quickly approaching, and that honors the veterans as well. And I can't remember the date of that, but I know it's in the middle of December. So it's not too late to still get your Reis. And East Nicholas girls volleyball team won their league, and then the California Division V Northern Section Championship is the only time, second time in the school's history, and they're on their way to the state playoffs tonight against Hanford. So that'll be interesting. So we will see some of you down there.
Supervisor McKelley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I didn't have anything from the district, but yeah, just wanted to say that obviously Veterans Day coming up, we're all going to be there, and each one of us in some form or fashion have supported the Yuba-Sutter Stand Down here for military veterans, and there's over 30,000 retired veterans here in Yuba-Sutter area. So we'll all be out there and supporting them as usual, and if you don't have anything to do, come on out, we'll throw some candy at you.
I'd like to close in memory of Nancy Murphy, formerly of Sutter, who passed away November 13th, and Santosh Sharma, who passed away October 12th. And then, now I'd like to end it on a positive. Okay, so first of all, I'd like to have a plaque, something made up for John and Kevin Putman for all their years of service in giving back to the community. They volunteer their auctioneer services all over the place. Like to do something as well for Marie Jo Finn. She's an outstanding young lady who is all over the place, her late husband, who's no longer with us. She continues the legacy of giving back, and you've probably seen her at a lot of these dinners, just continues to outbid everyone. And she says, "I'm gonna have a good time while I'm still around, and I'm gonna give everything back." I love it. It's a beautiful thing, beautiful lady. And then I want to go a little farther for what Supervisor Coe was saying, East Nicholas football team went undefeated.
Yes.
I keep tabs on it, so I'd like to get a plaque for the football team. They're in section playoffs right now, but we'll get them a league championship because at least they won that. And the Sutter football team, they won their league championship. Both of these teams went undefeated in the league, which is pretty neat. And then the women's volleyball, they lost one game. It's okay, Sutter Huskies, we went undefeated, I think. But that's just awesome to see this. Yuba City, Yuba City came from a behind win, won last Friday night, they're playing Grant. So it's very scary down there, three shootings this year alone at Grant High School. So pray for those individuals, and they go down there and travel down there this Friday night, that everything is safe, and they go down there and pull another upset. Yes?
Copy that.
Okay, so, look, I can go on. Okay, I'd like to do something for, get some sort of plaque or something for Dusty Baker. I'm sorry, but it's a funny story. I got his cell phone number, if you need his number. He called me up one night, and he said, "Hey, Larry, how you doing? This is Dusty calling to see what's up and talk you all." I said, "Larry, this is Larry Munger's answering machine. I'm Mike Ziegemeyer, I'm his secretary, and I can relay that message." So if he's seeing this, I still have your number, Larry, or Dusty, but Dusty Baker spends time here in the Sutter County. I met him for the first time at the Refuge like 20 years ago, coming back from a duck hunt, and I'm sure every one of you guys have run into him, so many people here in the community. He spends a lot of time and effort, and so I think that's very fitting. And he would look at them like, wow, that's amazing. For Ray Rata, taught for over 40 years at Sutter High School, he just had a recent sickness not too long ago. I'm hoping that he works his way back because the baseball field's named after Ray Rata, Rata Field. He's mowed, he bought a tractor, bought a mower, takes care of, he's always done that until this recent downfall. But like I said, hopefully he gets his strength back up, but like to see something given to him, and that is it for me. And did you have anything else, Supervisor?
No. I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Except all those.
Motion, can I get a roll call, please?
Supervisor McKelley?
Aye.
Wait, actually, hold on one second. Almost forgot, sorry. We have Paula Bicknell, and we have Shelby Bates, we still have that on, so we can get them in here?
Yes, for November 29th. We'll try for that.
All right.
Supervisor McKelley?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores? Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
Yes.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Conant?
Aye. All right, this meeting's adjourned.
Yubasutter.live's local government livestreams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske Truck Rentals. Details at plumaslakeselfstorage.com. Skip's Marysville Music Cafe with lessons in person and personalized, instruments including guitars and amps, horns, strings, strings for instruments, and a myriad of music and sound equipment. Skip's Marysville Music Cafe.